City Council, regular meeting in order here on Tuesday, May 27th at 7:00 PM. Looks like we're missing Councilmember Schultz and Councilmember Holstrom this evening. Please join me for the Pledge of Allegiance.
Pledge of Allegiance.
To the flag of the United States of America, to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, and free of any injustice.
All right, thank you. Look for a motion to approve tonight's amended agenda.
So moved.
Okay, I got a motion by Councilmember Cook. Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Councilmember Torres. Any further discussion? Seeing none. All those in favor?
Aye.
All those opposed?
Nope, sorry. That's not what I meant to say at all.
Motion passes three to zero. All right, consent agenda. Any questions on that? If not, we look for a motion.
Mayor, I'll make a motion to approve the consent agenda.
Got a motion by Councilmember Torres to approve tonight's consent agenda. Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Councilmember Cook. Any further discussion?
One quick question.
Yep.
Five N, accepting resignation of Mary Lou Byers. Just here, we have, all the paperwork is in good order as far as like signatures and all. Has that been reviewed? Just making sure. I think it is. I just wanted to double check.
I guess I'm confused. I just want to make clear what paperwork.
So, in the resignation, I mean, we actually received, like, there was a document saying, "I'm resigning." Okay.
Yes, yes.
That was it. That's it.
Okay. Any further discussion? Seeing none. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
All those opposed? Motion passes three to zero. All right, next is matters from the floor. Anyone wishing to speak should fill out one of these yellow forms that we have here and hand it to one of the city staff members, state your name and address, and then we'll present those and we'll call people forward based on the order that we received them for public comment. General, I attempt to answer questions, but we'll consider those for future council meetings.
Do I gotta stay right here?
You can step right now.
Such a big, I feel naked here.
Yes. Welcome, welcome Joe.
All right. I may say some stuff that may offend some people, but as Schultz always says, it's my right, I gotta, it's my opinion, I've got a right to say it, right? Of course, this is regarding the assessments, and I'm sure you've heard enough of it and everything else, but I still feel it's my obligation to at least give a little bit more of my own feedback. When we received the letter, and I'm talking about the address at 16 Sixth Avenue Northeast, because I'm part owner of that property through inheritance, which is, I believe, Alley Six, Broadway to First Street, right?
I think so, yes.
Am I correct?
I don't know for sure if you're correct on the alley number, but yes.
Okay, one of those.
I know where your address is, yep.
It's a property on the alley, all right? I don't believe that the value of what was assessed is going to be, meet the value of what the proposed value by putting a new alley in, being that there is no garage, there is no driveway. There's no benefit other than the garbage truck taking the garbage from the alley once a week, all right? I've been looking up some of the taxes on some of the properties in town for lots that are similar size, 60 by 125, which is what you call a standard lot in town. Some of those lots are, the property values are 85,000. Some of the lots that are maybe eight feet wider by the same depth are 58,000. The assessments on the street that were done on this particular property, the house value went down $12,500 after the streets were finished. So did the property value. So I don't understand how you can get $8,668 of assessment to charge that much for the property. It doesn't make any sense. I've contacted several real estate agents and appraisers. Alleys do not increase the value of your property at all. So I don't know where you come up with your assessment. The day that we received this letter, I believe it was the 28th of April, I had talked to Councilmember Torres in front of his house, we live on the same street, said, "What's this all about?" He told me he got several calls from people about this amount and said, "Don't worry about it. That's not the amount you're going to be assessed. That doesn't have anything to do with bond money or anything else." I said, "Well, are they using the bond money?" He goes, "They better. Otherwise, he's going to be pissed." Well, he's not pissed, but I am. So I felt I was misleded on that. Otherwise, I would have sent in a written objection before the hearing, because I was told this isn't the amount you're going to pay by a council member. That takes me off. Especially when the, when last year, when you guys were doing, in November, you said people would be assessed between $5,000 and $7,000. And it's 86, almost 8,700. That's a lot of money. When, on, and on the 24 project for the streets, not everybody paid the same, like was stated here. I live on a corner lot, I paid more money. I think if you're going to assess the alleys, the people that have double lots or longer lots on the alley should be assessed more. People with driveways that benefit from that alley, they should pay more. Now, this is just my opinion. And, and they should pay more, because I paid more living on a corner lot to have my streets done. So I, I just don't think that the average for every lot, count how many houses are on the lot, are on the aisle, alley, and say, "We'll split it up equally," because it's not equally. It's not right, it's not fair. You buy a bigger lot because you want a bigger lot, you pay more for assessments when assessments are, come about. That's the way it is. You paid more for yours, Mr. Mayor, right? Because you live on a corner? But you paid less for your alley by about $3,000 than what I'm getting assessed on mine. I don't get it. When there's that money sitting there, that the whole city's going to be paying back anyway. I, I just don't get it. I know that the assessments for the alley in 25 is more than 22, 23 because inflation and, and all that stuff. I get that part. But I just, I just don't get why, you know, Mr. Torres worked so diligently for the streets to save the people on the street money, but I don't feel like he worked diligently to help the people on the alley project, especially when they had an opportunity to, to, to wait a week, talk to other council members that weren't here to get up to speed, and it didn't change the project going forward. But yet, well, some people are going to be mad at me, but, well, oh, well, I moved to move this thing forward. I feel that was just a laydown. My opinion. And I've got a right to express it. What a way to start off the public speaking, right? Anyway, I just thought I'd, I, I feel my, to do my due diligence to, to at least express that, and then, and I just don't think there was enough thought or compassion. And even, even if I did, even if you did break it, do it the other way, why should I be paying as much as somebody who's got a garage, whether it's a single car, double car garage on an alley? Why should I have to pay the same? No other cities do. Most people go by the, the lineal footage for the streets or the square footage for the lot. If you did square footage for the lot, with 7,500 square feet, 60 by 125, 7,500, $100, $100 a, a square foot, that's $7,500. Or a buck a square foot, or whatever they call it, 7,500 bucks. But because I don't, because somebody has a driveway or a garage that benefits more, well, it's not fair to charge them more, but, you know, let everybody else pick up the pieces? It's BS. Thanks for listening.
Thank you. I'd say no additional notices. Moving on, seven, special business, 7A, accept donations.
Mayor, council, resolution, accepting donation to the city of Osseo, whereas the Osseo City Council is generally authorized to accept contributions of real and personal property pursuant to Minnesota statute, section 465 dot 03, and whereas the council agrees that said donation would be a benefit to the citizens of Osseo, and whereas the following has proposed this contribution to the city of Osseo and the donation be used for specific purpose as indicated below. Premier Banks, $5,000 to night, to unite.
All right, look for a motion to accept tonight's donations. So moved. I got a motion by Councilmember Torres to accept tonight's donations. Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Councilmember Cook. Any further discussion? Seeing none. Attorney teach him, please.
Thank you, Mayor. This is resolution number 30. Councilmember Torres?
Aye.
Councilmember Cook?
Aye.
Mayor Poppy?
Aye. Motion passes three to zero. All right, number eight, public hearings. Approve new liquor license for Red Savoy's Pizza.
Mayor, council, we have a new owner at Red Savoy's Pizza, and we've, they submitted an application for on sale 3.2% malt liquor beer license to serve beers at Red Savoy's Pizza. As of May 21st, 2025, Red Savoy's Pizza license is conditional that it completed certificate of insurance and proof of worker compensation insurance is received prior to June 1st. Background check was completed and the $300 license fee has been paid.
Good. So first, we need to open the public hearing and see if there's any comments, and then close the public hearing afterwards.
Mr. Mayor, I move to open the public hearing on the proposed approval of the new liquor license for Red Savoy Pizza.
Okay, we got a motion by Councilmember Cook to open the public hearing. Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Councilmember Torres. Any further discussion? Seeing none. All those in favor?
Aye.
All right, all those opposed? Public hearing is opened at 7:12. Are there any comments for the public hearing? Seeing none. We'll look for a motion to close the public hearing.
Mr. Mayor, I move to close the public hearing on the new liquor license for Red Savoy Pizza.
Okay, we got a motion by Councilmember Cook to close the public hearing. Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Councilmember Torres. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
All those opposed? Motion passes three to zero. The public hearing is closed at 7:13 PM. Now, we'd look for a motion to approve the new liquor license.
Mr. Mayor, I move to approve the new liquor license for Red Savoy Pizza.
I got a motion by Councilmember Cook to approve the new liquor license for Red Savoy's. Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Councilmember Torres. Any further discussion? Seeing none. All those in favor?
Aye.
All those opposed? Motion passes three to zero. All right, nine, old business, 9A, approve second reading of pet store ordinance and summary publication.
Mayor and council, the April 20th work session, you reviewed a proposed ordinance concerning sales of cats and dogs and pet stores. Based on your guidance, we were directed to move the ordinance forward to a first reading. May 12th council meeting was the first reading occurred. We are asking the council to hold the second reading and adopt the ordinance and approve summary publication.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes.
I would recommend two separate motions on this, one for the second reading and one for the resolution.
Yes.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes.
I would like to make a motion to approve the second reading adoption, or just, just approving the second reading.
Second reading, yep, and then.
I'd like to make a motion to approve the second reading of a pet store ordinance.
Okay, we got a motion by Councilmember Cook to approve the second reading of the pet store ordinance. Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Councilmember Torres. Any further discussion? Seeing none. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
All those opposed? Motion passes three to zero. Now, we need a motion adopting the resolution and summary publication.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes.
I'd like to make a motion to adopt the resolution approving the pet store, new pet store ordinance.
And summary publication?
Summary publication.
Yeah, we got a motion by Councilmember Torres to adopt the resolution and summary publication for the ordinance. Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Councilmember Cook. Any further discussion? Seeing none. Attorney teach him, please.
This is resolution 31. Councilmember Cook?
Aye.
Councilmember Torres?
Aye.
Mayor Poppy?
Aye. Motion passes three to zero. All right, 10, new business, 10A, approve purchase of Flock cameras.
Mayor and council, I'm going to turn this over to Lieutenant Kinsey, and also a presentation by Ellie. I can't remember your last name. Shelda, from Flock Safety.
Good evening. I'm, I'll talk really brief. I'm going to turn it over to her because she knows a lot more about it than I do. But basically, Flock is a new technology. I shouldn't say new technology, but they're license plate reader cameras that are permanently fixed and mounted on like a pole, streetlight, and they'll run every license plate that comes past the camera. And if there's a, like a stolen vehicle or a wanted vehicle, it will send our officers alerts that there's that vehicle that's on the road, and we can try and intercept it. Also, somebody like an Amber Alert will send us alerts for something like that. We've been in negoti, I'm sorry, not negotiated, but in, in talks with Flock Safety, which actually supplies LPR cameras to multiple cities around our area. And I've reached out to other communities that use the technology, and I've heard nothing but good things about it. And I think it's going to be a good addition for our department. So I'm going to turn it over to Ellie, because she can answer a lot more questions and give me a lot better presentation than I can. So we got the PowerPoint working great.
Hi, like Lieutenant said, my name is Ellie Shelda, and I have had the honor of working with himself and City Administrator Michelson over here as well, to educate your guys' police department about the use of Flock Safety and the growing prevalence around the state of Minnesota. If you want to move on to the next one here, just have a couple slides that I'd like to show you guys, just to educate you on Flock Safety. Essentially, it's just a collaborative policing network. If you want to go on to the next slide, we don't need to go through all of these crazy in-depth here. This slide just highlights the usage of Flock Safety, not only across Minnesota, but across the US. We work with over 5,000 law enforcement agencies today, from Homeland Security to state troopers in some states, a ton in Minnesota as well, very well-used across 49 states. You can move on here if you want from this one. Not all of this applies to you guys. Highlighting that Flock Safety outside of license plate readers, we have a lot of other software and technology for public safety. So not only is the platform a tool that is oftentimes leveraged by law enforcement, but want to highlight that it's an approach to community safety as well, and the aspect that we partner with a ton of universities and higher education centers, such as University of Minnesota, Twin Cities here in your backyard, ton of K through 12 schools, to receive notifications for who is entering onto those campuses beforehand. And then we have a lot of retail partnerships as well. So using it in many different aspects, but also with a wide variety of technology encompassing live video, drones, and then a bunch of software that backs up all of these physical devices, which is what helps the platform to be so smart and intuitive. Proceed on to that one. If anybody hasn't seen and visual of what the license plate reader looks like, that's what it's going to be up on the side of the screen. Yeah, that's fine. You're able to move on, Alicia. Thank you. Essentially, it is gathering this data through the use of the physical devices that are going to be sitting throughout your community. What it's doing is it's taking an image of every single license plate as it goes by, which is the same as any license plate reader that is already used in a squad car today. The difference is that it's able to run those license plates and notify your police officers who are on duty within five seconds of somebody being on some sort of hot list, giving them an image of the car, an image of the license plate, validating the confidence level of that license plate, identifying other key characteristics on the vehicle. So if somebody comes through town and you've been looking for a red pickup truck that doesn't even have a license plate on it, but you know that it was just called in for somebody picking up a lawnmower and throwing it into the back of their truck, but somebody on their ring wasn't able to see a license plate, or somebody swings through the gas station and they have a bunch of wood in the back of their car, but they drive off without paying for their gas, or they're at the liquor store right over here and they take something when they don't have a license plate, you're able to search within the system for other key vehicle descriptors. The AI technology in it will run all of the images to find things that match. The power of the system is that it's not only pulling from the stuff that's being captured on your cameras, it's going to cross-reference it with other agencies that you choose to share with, within the state of Minnesota. Again, since they're out there 24/7 yielding data all the time. You can move on from that. Awesome, thank you. The next one is probably glad, this is a little more self-explanatory. Just really want to highlight what the technology is not. There is no facial recognition. We don't do anything for people data. It is truly only capturing information that is visible to the eye, under the expectation of privacy on a public roadway for a publicly registered vehicle. Everything is logged under transparency portal that we will support for Osseo Police Department that is accessible to the public by just searching "Osseo Flock Safety." And then the system is fully auditable as well for every single use under CGIS compliance. You can move on. Boring stuff about the network and the, and the usage of it. Osseo, you're going, you guys are applying for four license plate readers. I don't think that's new to you guys. And then the next one is probably the last one we can go to. There's almost 600 LPRs installed in the state of Minnesota today, and over 100 that are waiting to get permitted, if that shows anything about the network. And I do have a list of all of the agencies within the state as well, if that's something you guys are interested in. Hope that was at least a little bit educational to some of you. I know that some of you have already had visibility. Does anybody have questions that I can help answer while I'm here?
Council, questions?
No, I mean, I've seen this through the Public Safety Committee. It looks like something that's really valuable and useful.
Mr. Mayor, this might be a, over, this might be a question you cannot answer, I'm not sure, but, you know, it's a relatively, I mean, this is all relatively new technology and different things like that.
Yeah.
Has there been any fight back on, like, illegal surveillance, or, I mean, are there any pending, are there any, like, outstanding court cases or pending court cases against the company, or, you know, that's something that could end up hurting the longevity of the company that all of a sudden, we, you know, we put these cameras in place and all of a sudden the company folds because it's got eight pending lawsuits, or, you know, and, and, again, I just, again, just looking at, trying to look at it from the devil's advocate perspective, so to speak, just so that I make sure that we're, we're doing our due diligence.
Yeah, no, I appreciate that. I think that that's a great question. The state of Minnesota actually just went through a very long extensive pilot program with Flock Safety. We had a full pilot program going in Anoka County Sheriff's Office in Blaine, as well as up in St. Louis County, up in the very northern part of the state. The state found that all of the data that was being yielded was incredibly beneficial with no concerns at all. So actually, Minnesota DOT is looking into the traffic analytics portion of the solution that we offer to proceed from a statewide level in terms of across the country, and there being maybe legal issues or battles with Flock. If anybody has ever presented something, it's been something that Flock has won, but it's never been overly intrusive or anything that's been very concerning. If you're talking more maybe about a Big Brother aspect or something like that, again, the data is only what's visible to the naked eye. So if you go all around town, you have live video cameras. If you walk into a store, there's stuff that's capturing facial recognition and everything. What the system is doing and how it's different than other solutions out there is it's the technology that we have built that is able to sift through so much data so quickly to be able to give the evidence quickly to law enforcement officers, enabling them to act quicker before something poor happens.
Mr. Mayor?
Yep.
I could also just add to that, in that state law, Minnesota Data Practices Act limits the kind of data that can be collected by these cameras. So it is limited to license plate numbers, pictures of license plates, date and location data on vehicles. Any other, collection of any other kind of data is prohibited by the Data Practices statute. So I don't know if that gives you a little bit more information. And also, any data that's not being used for an active criminal investigation must be deleted within 60 days.
Correct. Our system actually only yields the data for 30, and we hold it in a CGIS compliant space. So you're not responsible for holding any of the data that your units are gathering. Everything is completely owned by you, but we store it for you on your behalf, so you don't have to get your IT, IT team fully involved. That's part of kind of the hands-off approach, is making it easier and more accessible for law enforcement or smaller agencies to be able to partake in bigger pieces of technology that they wouldn't always have access to due to cost.
And, and just so I know, acronym sometimes CGIS is the state auditor, basically, the BCA runs that program and, and programming, so.
So I'm going to assume there's, this all kind of falls under plain view doctrine, but have there been any constitutional challenges to this technology, any Fourth Amendment search, any litigation going on in that area?
There's none currently that I'm aware of. I know that in the past, there has been a little bit. Flock has been around since 2017. So I know that earlier on in Flock, when it was new techno, well, I shouldn't even say new technology, right? License plate readers have been around for a really, really long time. The only thing Flock is doing differently is putting it somewhere permanent versus somewhere that is on a, on a mobile vehicle. So the difference is you're allocating an officer to do it versus leaving it to be on its own, right? So I know that when it was first around, there was a little bit more, yes, but nothing that has impacted the company in a negative way. Sorry, I can't speak to a great example for you.
That's, that actually answered the question. Thank you. Any additional questions?
And do you saw where, where, just to kind of give Todd another view as far as where the money's coming from?
Yeah, currently, I'm sorry, we're proposing four cameras. They're about $3,000 apiece. So we're looking at four of them, two on each end of central, one facing northbound, or two facing northbound, two facing southbound. We're looking at about $12,000 a year. And like I said, Flock will be responsible for doing the installation, all the permitting, all that, and I think we identified funds through the gambling fund to, to, to pay for this.
I don't want to speak over you. You don't, you can add a little bit more to that. So that is based on the subscription model, and that cost includes all of the access to all of the different networks and everything that you guys have. We will maintain all of the physical devices on your behalf, so everything is also solar-powered, meaning it's infrastructure-free. So we will want, handle 100% of the permitting that goes along with it. We have a Flock team that will come out and install everything on your guys' behalf. It's not something that we outsource to, to a local handyman in the area here in Osseo. And then we will maintain the devices. So if they're not optimizing great or anything like that, we will come out and replace the license plate readers, replace the solar panels, add battery packs to them, anything like that. And then there aren't any additional costs on top of that in terms of how many people you have accessing it within the department, or searches, or paying for audits, or anything like that.
And we did have Counselor Teach and look over the contract, so that that's been settled.
Can help answer?
No further questions. Is there a motion? Actually, I do still have a question.
What? So is this, this purchase allocated within last year's budget as a part of the overall public safety spend? No, this would come out of the 10%.
Gambling proceeds.
Gambling proceeds. Lot of those, you know, we've been, we've been, the reason that we went downtown, and again, there are other gambling areas, but that would just be the gambling proceeds that we have for the 10%. 90% of our gambling areas are downtown, and this would be covering them. Again, yes, the Legion is outside of that, but if this technology works, and we can show some reasons to have it, we'd love to expand it in the future to be out onto every entrance and exit of Osseo, just to help us through a lot of our investigations. This is a force multiplier for us, and that's why we looked at it. It wasn't something that we budgeted for, because it's something that came on our radar, and we really thought it was something we could institute. Plus, it does take some time to get the permitting and.
I was just going to say, I can highlight that unless you want to highlight the payment.
Go ahead.
Okay. For the contract that you guys have that's been reviewed by your city attorney, nothing is to be paid until after the devices are installed. So permitting can take anywhere, probably from about three to five months, just depending on how fast the process is. That's standard in every state across the US, and pretty normal here in Minnesota. So then we come out and we will do an 811 site survey and everything, and then we install, so payment will not be. So payment will not be due until thirty days after the cameras are installed and validated working. So, I mean, what, we're just about in June here, so. Want to keep that in mind as well.
So I guess before moving forward, I just want to be real mindful that I'm asking the right questions when it concerns the, the cost of this. So I understand it comes out that says would come out of the ten percent gambling fund. And at its current rate, that gambling fund has enough funds to cover its cost. So there would be no cost per se to the taxpayers through the general fund if we moved forward with this.
Correct.
Want to make sure that's.
And that, and that gambling fund is, is about averaging somewhere in the ten thousand dollars a month. And this would be a yearly cost.
And then in fairness, again, just full transparency, so taking the money to do this would not preclude something else that we had already planned on doing, and now we're setting that aside.
This is the first opportunity for us to use that fund. There has been nothing else allocated there as of yet. But there is things on the horizon that we will be using those these funds for, um, because they can be allocated for police, fire, um, also park and rec. And I mean, we have a lot of that in the pipeline, but just nothing set yet. And we really wanted to give some time to see what the return on was that. So that we're not hoarding any money. It's just we didn't know what we're looking at. And now we've had about eight months worth of returns and seeing where that fund is at. And so, yes, there's going to be allocations coming for more. This is just the first one um, that we've looked at that we could allocate in this area. Again, that's not stepping on anything else or that we're not going to use it for other things, but this is the first thing we've been able to bring forward to counsel to use that fund for.
So then it'd be fair to say that this is exactly the purpose that the fund was created, it was intended for.
I, I would assume, again, I don't know the whole story behind why it was created, but there are other things like parks and there's things that we're going to be able to do with this fund that are be community-wide, and this is one of those things that's community-wide. I mean, public safety, especially with these types of cameras, is something that is a community-wide impact.
Um, sorry. Can I add to that? I think that's a great point that I maybe didn't highlight through the system. When you're able to audit things through there, you can track a solved case through the system so that if you are wondering what return on investment is throughout the system of three months or six months or a year, you can go back and look at what solved cases are, um, and see returns on that for future investment with Flock. If that's something you're interested in as well.
Mr. Mayor.
Is it, is it a year-by-year contract?
This is a two-year contract that you have in front of you, which is pretty standard for Flock, although you pay on an annual basis. So whenever your first invoice comes around, you have the net thirty to pay it. And then, um, a year after that first payment comes around, you will have the second one come. So it would probably be what? Late twenty twenty-six by the time that happens. Um, and then there is opt-out language in there as well. If the funding that you had allocated towards this, um, falls through, sad gambling fund in this case. Um, we work with a ton of law enforcement entities and know that grants and stuff can be volatile. So there is opt-out language if something were to fall through.
So no, I'm not supposed to do new guy question anymore, but I'm gonna do a new guy question. So in the process of the city negotiating a contract such as this, whose eyes kind of look through the actual nitty-gritty of the contract details, specifically like the opt-out clause? Has that?
Mary does.
Okay, so has that been done?
I've reviewed the contract, commented on it, provided feedback. Some changes were made to it in response to my feedback. So I felt, and I've seen the same contract in other cities as well, so I've reviewed it a few times.
So I guess absolutely don't want to put you in a corner, so don't ask if you can. Oh, it is actually a general. So generally speaking, this, this contract doesn't put Oseo obviously in a bad position because that whole purpose of, of the, um, city attorney is to look out for this. So I'm going to assume that the contract is good to go, but again, I want to make a matter of public record that we are doing our due diligence here.
The contract is also two years. We don't do any auto renewal on any type of contract. So after the two years, you wouldn't ever roll into another two-year or anything like that.
And the term, the, the contract will renew, you, you have a thirty-day, um, notice, um, that you could give if you wish to not renew it.
From a legal standpoint, yes, but it will not, not turn over until, yeah, until it's talked about. Yep.
So I'd say, given the due diligence that was put in, I would say since we're taking funds that are not going to be taken out of the general fund, we're using funds that were not necessarily allocated for anything specifically, but generally the creation of this ten percent gambling fund is used for a purpose such as this. And it is only taking what thirty percent? If it's ten thousand a month, we're taking three thousand, or we're taking twelve thousand out, but that's, is that it per year, right?
Yes, twelve thousand dollars per year and we're, I would say on the average, and it always can be fluctuating, right? Because of gambling proceeds is around a hundred and twenty, hundred and ten to a hundred and twenty thousand dollars into that fund. And twelve thousand dollars of that per year would come.
Gotcha. So what we're talking about in real terms is about one, or ten percent rather, yep, the one, carry the one. Always miss that decimal. No, just kidding. All right, so given all of that, I would make a motion to move forward with doing the purchase of the Flock LPR cameras for the police department. Again, contingent that we are taking it out of that ten percent.
And that's the four cameras?
Correct.
Motion the four cameras?
Yep, four cam, for the four cameras at the cost of twelve thousand dollars per year.
Yep, got a motion by Councilmember Torres to approve the proposal from Flock Safety to implement the four cameras. Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Councilmember Cook. Any further discussion?
I, I, I do have just one stipulating or one just question here, um, and it has to do with your motion. I don't know if this is the time or place and maybe Mary, you can comment on this, but, or Shane. Would there be something, I would just, I would like us to make sure that we come back to this at some point and review.
The data.
The data, the success, the, you know, that, that was this money that we allocated or spent on this? Worth it? Uh, you know, before we just automatically renew that contract moving forward. And so I don't know if that needs to be put into the motion someplace or if that's just standard procedure before any contract. I'm assuming before any contract could be renewed, it would have to come back before us.
Yes, and I mean, our, our goal is to highlight the usage and so you'll, we'll have that data for you.
Intensely, that's something that we could have, that information could be presented periodically through public safety, right? We could get some kind of.
We could. I, you know, I, again, until I have the whole system and we're in it, I'm not sure how, how much data we'll be able to gather and share. I know that we will highlight our successes and just to, was it, just the other day, I just read something. I, I just saw where Flock was used in Dayton and where it's, it was a pursuit.
Pursuit or motorcycle fled from him and they were able to use, the officer wasn't able to see the, the license plate, but the camera saw it. They were able to track it down and find the person at their house and then take him into custody.
There was a drunk driver in Rogers. I mean, these are public safety issues that Flock is assisting as a force multiplier for us.
So assuming same thing that it's going to find outstanding warrants.
Absolutely.
Correct. The system will notify officers of outstanding warrants as they're passing by your cameras, as well as restricted drivers and anybody else on some sort of federal or state NCIC hot lists, silver alerts, amber alerts, anything from. Grandma was supposed to show up for Easter three hours ago and grandma has dementia and, you know, like searching like, okay, she headed south and she was supposed to head north, you know, just for general public safety, things like that, or notifying of who is coming past schools. If there's people on registered sex offender lists, notifying law enforcement immediately of, of people passing by other public facilities like that. So there's a very, very wide range of usages for it.
Like the wide range. I mean, I think that's the, the plus of this system is the multi-dimension aspect of it. So we got things like grandma, right? So it's not just catching bad guys. It's helping people. It's amber alerts. It's. But I also really like the idea of outstanding warrants, because outstanding warrants aren't something and Lieutenant, correct me if I'm wrong, it's not something you're just going to automatically see. It's not right in front of you.
Correct. I think it gets, oh, sorry, go ahead.
Uh, it's, it's those guys, you know, that we want to capture. They're the quote-unquote, those are the villains, right? So, yeah, um, uh, for this kind of spend, I mean, it's not like we're talking hundreds of thousands of dollars, you know? It is money. It's important money. It's twelve grand, but I like where the money is coming from. Um, and it's only again, using ten percent of that. So it's not like we're taking, you know, we can, we can look at other things for parks and youth directors and things like that, that the rest of that ninety percent could potentially go through. So, and that's why I support this.
Mr. Mayor.
Yep.
I just want to make sure that we have everything in front of you. This is, what's the installation fee?
Um, we waived installation a hundred percent, but I believe it was about twenty-seven hundred.
But that's waived?
Yep, that is one hundred percent waived, yeah.
I just wanted to make sure that you knew that there was some buy-in by Flock also for our city.
I just want to make a kind of quick comment on kind of what you were talking about a second ago. I'm, having an officer that has knowledge of the car they're going to pull over before they pull it over is huge for us. I'd rather an officer know that somebody in that car is wanted for murder before they try to stop them and they're in a tough situation themselves. Because like you said, warrants just don't, they're not visible, so.
That's an, that's actually a really excellent point, because this now adds that dimension that we're looking at protecting those who protect us. So every comment keeps making me even more.
Not, not to bandwagon off of that, but, um, through the Flock system, you, if you are putting somebody on your own custom hot list, somebody that's out on a federal hot list like your warrants per se, um, you can also add notes into there so that if you are getting a hit on a vehicle in a certain location, you can click on it and see driver is known to carry a gun or, you know, driver is known to be violent, things like that, so that they can see notes maybe that aren't already in your system.
Any further questions? Got a motion or a second? All those in favor?
Aye.
All those opposed? Motion passes three to zero. Thank you.
Thank you guys for your time today.
Appreciate it. Thank you.
Right, ten B, approve TASER purchase for police department.
That me again too?
Yes, it is. Or is it me? No, I don't know.
I can go. I'll wing it. Excuse me. Um, in front of you today, we're asking for permission to spend more money. With adding a couple more officers, we need, uh, add some more equipment. And we're looking to purchase two TASER Model Sevens from Axon Enterprises. Uh, these are the TASERS that we've been, the last three or four purchases that we've made have been the same make and model. And we are looking to purchase two of those for the cost of six thousand two hundred and seventy-six dollars and ninety-four cents. That includes the, the TASERS themselves, the batteries, the holsters, all the cartridges and extended warranty. We made the same purchase last year, the same exact, um, specifications of what we did last year. And we're proposing to pay for this out of the, the twenty twenty-five capital improvement plan, which has already been budgeted for.
Mr. Mayor.
Yep. Uh, with the understanding that this has already been, um, budgeted for, it's already been, you know, it was already part of the plan um, for a budget that was approved by council, um, I would like to go ahead and make a motion to approve, um, the purchase of the two TASERS, um, from Axon for the cost of six thousand two hundred and seventy-six dollars and ninety-four cents.
Okay, got a motion by Councilmember Cook to approve the purchase of the TASERS. Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Councilmember Torres. Any further discussion? Seeing none? All those in favor?
Aye.
All those opposed? Motion passes three to zero. All right, ten C, approve police badge state seal replacement.
So of course I forgot my council agenda item, so I'm going to wing it. Our, last year, the, uh, state legislation legislators passed, uh, changed the state logo and the state flag. And our current police badges have the old state, state seal in them. And, um, the, since we changed the seal, we've updated the seal in our, the officers that started this last year and the ones that we have coming onboard later this year, we are those badges with the new state emblem and the new state seal. And this came in front, in front of the Public Safety Advisory Committee, uh, last month. And what we're proposing to do is take our current badges that have the old seal in them and sending them back to the manufacturer that produced them and having them, uh, change out the state seal with the new state seal in it. Uh, it's about a fifty dollar per badge, uh, cost to do that. And I think I put on the agenda item that we had like twenty-one badges. I lied, it should be twenty-two. We found one more. Okay, it's twenty-three now then. So, um, now's a good time to do it, since currently this year we're wearing the one hundred and fiftieth anniversary badges that don't have a state seal in them. So now I have an opportunity to send everybody's badges back, get those back before the end of the year, before we start wearing those badges again for next year.
Mr. Mayor.
Yep.
Um, this was talked about heavily during public safety, um, and it was, you know, relatively overwhelming support to have consistency amongst the badges of our Oseo Police Force. You know, not that you're ever going to have anybody, somebody out there with counterfeit badges or things like that. It happens. But, um, just to have, just to have consistency amongst the, amongst the, the, the staff, I, I think is important. And so, uh, with that, I would like to make a motion to approve sending police badges back to Simbarts to be resealed with the new Minnesota steel.
Okay, got a motion by Councilmember Cook to approve the police badge state seal replacement. Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Councilmember Torres. Any further discussion? Seeing none? All those in favor?
Aye.
All those opposed? Motion passes three to zero. Thank you. Ten D, approve memorandum of agreement with law enforcement, Labor Service Local One Eighty-Two.
Mayor and council, um, this year we are in negotiations with our current, uh, union. Um, the contract is up at the end of the year. Uh, we've started those, uh, talks. But currently we are appointing and have appointed, um, a detective. Part of that, um, position, and we knew this, was to, if we started it before the end of the year, which, uh, council agreed to and it was budgeted for, is that there would be some contract language that we'd have to have a memorandum of, of understanding or, uh, in this case, um, memorandum of agreement. Um, this has been looked at by Counsel Tichin. Uh, there was no feedback or back and forth. Basically, uh, because of the type of position, um, there are some differences from patrol. There are some specialty work that is going to go into it from education to, uh, being not on call, but getting called in, um, for different types of crimes, uh, especially, you know, writing warrants, uh, doing searches, doing some undercover work. Uh, they're going to be asked to, to get some, like I said, specialized training. And so we have, um, looked at a couple of different modes and, and operations and come to a conclusion that the compensation would be, uh, if they are, uh, above top patrol. So that top patrol per the contract, uh, currently is right at four years of service. If they're above top patrol, it's four percent. If, because we have such a young department, if there is someone that gets to be the detective and they aren't at four years yet, they would get four percent above top, whatever that top patrol number is. The uniform allowance, um, uh, they'd get a thousand dollars, um, to, because they're going to have to keep up. This is on top of the thousand they get for their regular police uniform, because they are going to have to keep two separate uniforms. They're going to have to have kind of the detective clothing, you know, maybe more of what I'd wear on a daily basis, um, kind of off-duty type clothing and, and wear. But they're going to also have to keep up their regular uniform, um, belt and things to be able to go back to patrol if we needed them to help in or they're still police officers, so. Uh, and then, um, again, they wanted to, some in language about the submit a request for a take-home vehicle. That's part of that contract. Now, this was also brought up at the HR level and approved as far as, uh, Councilmember Torres and Councilmember Schultz. Um, I did get some feedback and we went back and forth and this is kind of where we landed. Um, so what we're asking for is to approve the memorandum of agreement with its law enforcement, Labor Services Local One Eighty-Two. And that way, um, we can really start this program off here. And we do have a date. It's June ninth. So as of June ninth, this was slated to start.
Questions, counsel?
I was there, so I don't have any. I was there, so I don't have any questions.
Good, then we'll look for a motion.
I will make a motion to go forward with.
The memorandum of agreement?
Memorandum of agreement for the.
Law enforcement, labor services local 182.
Law enforcement, local 182 services.
Okay, we got a motion by councilmember Torres to approve the memorandum, memorandum of agreement with law enforcement labor services local 182, is that, is it, was that your motion?
Yes.
Yes, is there a second?
Second.
Second by councilmember Cook, any further discussion?
So, just a real quick update about the, when we had the public safety, or the HR, HR committee meeting regarding this. There was a lot of work put into this, and I want to thank staff for that. I mean, there was negotiations, we were able to get a number of concessions in our favor, so I just want to point that out. And this is just, I mean, this is a part of doing business and, when it comes to law enforcement, so. We felt pretty good, I'm obviously not gonna speak specifically for councilmember Schultz, but there was agreement, and we were all aligned with coming back to council with the recommendation to move forward.
Okay. All right, any other comments? Done, all those in favor?
Aye.
All those opposed? Motion passes three to zero. All right, 10E, approve update to job description for administrative assistant position.
Thank you, mayor and council. So, as you saw on the consent agenda tonight, we did get a notice of resignation from our, our administrative assistant, Mary Lou Byer, and she's moving on and doing great things, so we'll miss her. However, this gave us an opportunity to look at the job description a little bit more closely. So, the position will, we need to be posted and filled, and this role really performs indispensable duties in the everyday operations of City Hall and is really the, the main face that people come in when they come to the window and, and need some sort of assistance. She's kind of the, the first one there to answer those first lines of questions. So, I've included a redlined version of the outdated job description. A big one on there was a lot of the permit processing, which now is primary, primarily completed through the baseline process, software. And the administrator, the assistant, administrative assistant, sorry, has, has fewer duties just, just related to permits in general. We've also added some language along, along the website maintenance, social media administration, and some duties related to the laser fiche transition, that, that role will be fulfilling. Budget and other considerations, this position is a pay grade three and is already a part of our payroll budget, is it'll just be replacing an existing employee. So, at this point, I can answer any questions, but we're just looking for any, any feedback you might have on the updated job description.
Mr. Mayor?
Yep. I think, you know, staff, I appreciate you putting this together, I think staff knows best as to what goes on in the day-to-day operations in that office. And if they have all, you know, looked through this and, you know, there's nothing in here that like jumps off the page at me that I would question as far as what, you know, why was this changed? I think everything that you just explained makes total sense. And for those of us that, I kind of went through some of these additional changes that have happened with the approval of the new permitting company and the microfiche and all that kind of stuff, that we understand, you know, all of those changes make total sense. So, with that, I would like to make a motion to approve the updated job description for the administrative assistant position.
Okay, we got a motion by councilmember Cook to approve the updated job description, is there a second?
Second.
Second by councilmember Torres, any further discussion?
Mr. Mayor?
Yep.
I would just add that we did also send this through the HR committee as well, just in case.
Any additional comments? Done, all those in favor?
Aye.
All those opposed? Motion, motion passes three to zero. All right, 10F, approve job posting for administrative assistant.
Mr. Mayor, obviously, just a continuation of that last item. We have, the position will be vacant as of May 30th. So, we would like to advertise the position, starting as soon as possible with the League of Minnesota Cities, our own website, I'm not sure if we're gonna be using some other recruiting sites likely, depends on kind of what our first round of applications look like. We do feel that this is generally a, a range that gets a fair amount of applicants, so we're optimistic at least. So, yeah, the next step is just looking to go ahead and make that posting.
Mayor, Mr. Mayor?
Yep.
Just to, to give some added depth, I think what we'll do is we'll accept applications, either score them, depending on how many we receive, then first interviews will be staff, second interviews or final interviews, kind of what we've done in the past as far as the police department is that second, final interviews would have just a shorter list of people that the council will then choose for HR, at least to recommend to council. And so, there will be council members involved in this hiring process, so.
Mr. Mayor?
Yep.
I would like to make a motion to approve and advise staff to post the administrative assistant position and begin the application interviewing and hiring process.
Okay, got a motion by councilmember Cook to approve the job posting, is there a second?
Second.
Second by councilmember Torres, any further discussion?
The, the part about the emergency medical responder that might be, oh, that's, okay. Disregard, city minister, okay.
So, no further comments, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
All those opposed? Motion passes three to zero. All right, 10G, approve recruitment and posting for Osseo firefighters.
Mr. Mayor and council, we're gonna have Fire Chief Mike Cogswell come up and speak on this topic.
Thank you, mayor and council. I was asked to add this to the agenda, just looking to get approval to start hiring again from the council. Any questions?
Question, on the emergency medical responder class that may be reimbursable, when do we, like, how do you find out if we're actually going to be, are we within the timeframe to be able to take that opportunity, capture that?
Right, no, I, probably not.
What does something like that cost?
The outfit?
Generally speaking, I know you weren't, I didn't send you a question in advance, and I apologize.
Tell you the truth, I don't know. You just talking, you just want to know the cost for EMR.
Right, because it's, it's according to the budget considerations, it looks like when we put the new hires through training, we do get reimbursed for a few of these programs. But this, this emergency medical responder class says maybe. So, I'm just kind of wondering, you know, if we approve this going forward, if that maybe turns into a no, you're not going to be, what does that look like in terms of, like, how's that gonna hit the budget? What are those expenses? Have we planned for expenses like that, or is there a fund that we can go to?
Yeah, we, there's ways to pay for it.
Mr. Mayor? Yep. This, I mean, Chief Cogswell, I know that you, you guys do an incredible job, but we are operating understaffed currently, the fire department. And so, this is something that is, this is a necessary next step to get, to get, to get up to speed, is, you know, what this is.
I mean, we've been lower, but I don't want it any lower.
Right, no, what this is doing is this is just saying, lift the paws, let's get our fire department back up to, to where it needs to be, and move forward so that we're not risking the lives of current firefighters by being understaffed and outmanned at different scenes. And so, to me, that makes a lot of sense, I think that's something that we need to do, we do, and I think that the sooner the better as far as, as far as that goes, so. With that, I'd like to make a, a motion to approve the recruitment and posting for the Osseo firefighters.
Okay, we got a motion by councilmember Cook to approve the recruitment and posting for the Osseo firefighters, is there a second?
Second.
Second by councilmember Torres, any further discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor?
Aye.
All those opposed? Motion passes three to zero.
Thank you.
All right, 10H, approve historical preservation committee purchase for storage of historical items.
Mr. Mayor and council, the Osseo Historical Preservation Committee, they've been meeting more consistently this year. They are being met with city staff member Natalie Santillo, so she's not here tonight, so I'm taking this for her. They wanted to get the historical items stored in a basement and be better protected than what they are now. With recent water issues in City Hall, there is a sense of urgency to protect artifacts that are stored here. There are currently no protective measures being taken to protect historical artifacts. The Osseo Historical Preservation Committee is seeking the council to approve the purchase of waterproof totes and the organizational items to start the process of safekeeping of these historical documents. The committee met on May 14th, 2025, and requested that the purchase of these items be brought to council. The request is to use up to $750 in waterproof storage solutions. They do have a budget balance of $11,529.11 that can be used. I know that in talking with city clerk Santillo is that, you know, this is a smaller purchase, but by their bylaws, they have to come to council to ask for permission, so it can't be something staff just goes out and uses, so.
Mr. Mayor?
Yep.
I have had a few conversations with councilman Torres about this situation, and I know that he has strong opinions, that there is a significant need for this purchase. And so, with that, I would like to make a motion to approve the purchase of the waterproof storage options for the Historical Preservation Committee, up to $750.
Okay, we got a motion by councilmember Cook to approve the Historical Preservation Committee purchase of the storage containers, up to 750, is there a second?
Second.
Second by councilmember Torres, any further discussion?
That's how you keep me from droning on.
All right.
You said it, I did.
Seeing none, all those in favor?
Aye.
All those opposed? Motion passes three to zero. All right, 10I, authorize grant application.
Mr. Mayor, we all might remember that we're now working with Jay Murphy and Associates for our grant writing and research services. One of the first and top priorities is looking for grants to look into the North Water Tower restoration. And there, they did come back with a variety of different possible funding sources, which I've put in the packet, there was a list of, I believe, four grant opportunities. So, it is of note that a conditions assessment was completed in 2020. However, it's, that report is now past its usable date. So, the four possible grant options that were compiled, compiled for the North Water Tower, some would only include the cost of, part of a cost really of the, a new report, whereas the larger historical, historical, Minnesota Historical Society Large Legacy Grant Application is one that could cover both expenses towards a, a new conditions report as well as potentially move forward with some of the actual construction work, if we were to get to that point. So, the advice of the grant writers was to move forward with the Minnesota Historical Society Large Legacy Grant. However, there, there are a couple other options there, if, if anyone has some more questions about them. The, the main drawback that they found was going for some of these more regional funding sources. They don't have the same relationships to Minnesota communities. So, there would be an element where possibly they would have to spend some time kind of trying to, to build some relationships with those particular foundations in order to kind of stand out in the grant application process. Whereas the Minnesota Historical Society Large Legacy Grant, they felt like they could make the best fit for our needs within that application. So, if council is interested in moving forward with that grant application, we just, we would need the, the go-ahead, and Jay Murphy can start that process for us.
Quick question is, and I'm by no means, I don't know anything about grants, like how to get them. I just, 10,000 view is still too close, right? So, little quick education, if you go down the path of a grant, such as starting to write it up, doing the research, ticking all the boxes for Minnesota Historical Society Large Legacy Grant, and if it looks like that isn't gonna happen, but you do all this work and then it looks like, nope, just they're, they don't have the money anymore, they're not gonna do it, or whatever, are all those hours lost, or can some of that work then be moved over for another grant? Is it, I guess, simply put, is it all or nothing with the grant work that happens?
Councilmember Torres, I can answer that. I think if it's in a similar fashion and they just have to read, because what we're finding is, is that when you go to write a grant, again, this is new to us also, is that there's a lot of background work that we're doing and giving them information that we'd never really even knew we kind of had, or we're getting information that we've never asked before, and then they're conglomerating that into their system and writing these grants. So, yes, some of that work, they don't have to do the work, because some of those figures, some of the options, whatever we're as staff giving them, that's work they can use on a different grant, if it's asking for similar information. But, I mean, the hours are the hours, and yes, a second, secondary grant, if it's similar, would probably be less hours, because they already have all the information, does that make sense?
Yes.
Yeah, and that's what, that's what's really nice, and that's what we've been talking about. So, if we give them the, this information and say it doesn't happen this year, but then council wants us to try next year, it'll be less money, because they've got everything, it's just updating, right? And that's the relationships that we are building with Jay Murphy, and that's what they're seeing across their grant writing with private companies to pub, public cities, is just that information gathering and putting it all down.
Yeah, and I think that's why it was such, so well-done, that was forward-thinking and doing that contract with GMA for that very purpose. Yeah, I think this, I mean, this is another important thing, it's kind of fits in that historical part as well. I know both councilmember Cook and myself actually used that tower as an icon in our campaign material. And I mean, it's when you come driving down Jefferson, it's so awesome to see this, you're coming over the crest of that hill and you see that water tower, I mean, it's just, that's something you just don't give up, and you find ways to make it work, so you keep something like that, so. I, I like this option of going for the large C grant, we're gonna have to do some, we're gonna have to do some creative thinking, figuring out how we do matching and whatnot, but that's further down the road. Let's see if we can get that grant money first. So, I, I would be in favor of option number two, and since I'm a historical guy, I'm gonna make a motion to authorize JMA to complete other grant application on behalf of the city of Osseo.
Do, do you want specifically the large legacy grant?
The large legacy grant.
That's option one.
It's option one.
Option one, apologies.
Would you like to amend your motion?
I would like to amend my motion.
To what?
City council choosing to authorize JMA to complete Minnesota Historical Society Large Legacy Grant application on behalf of the city of Osseo.
Okay, we got a motion by councilmember Torres to authorize JMA to complete the Minnesota Historical Society Large Legacy Grant application, is there a second?
Second.
Second by councilmember Cook, any further discussion?
I was just gonna add that this is what we, this is why we got in this agreement with, with JMA in the first place, was to do this, was to pursue these types of things, so. For us to not, to, to, to be in this agreement with them and then not move forward with something like this, it seemed counterintuitive, so I think, I absolutely 100% support it, so.
Okay, all right, any other comments? Seeing none, all those in favor?
Aye.
All those opposed? Motion passes three to zero. All right, 10J, Furniture Manor variance application.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. So, some background here, so for the variance application, at the May 9th Osseo Planning Commission meeting, the planning commission voted to deny the application for variance at Furniture Manor, located at 334 County Road 81. The owner of Furniture Manor is requesting a variance to construct a 29-foot sign, which is the maximum height allowable, we have is 15 feet per city code, sign code. which is the maximum height allowable we have is fifteen feet per city code, sign code. And the proposed, the proposed sign is also outside of the allowable sign surface area per Osseo city code, which is one hundred and fifty square feet. The designs call for an upper area and a lower area. The upper area being one hundred square feet, the lower one hundred and fifty square feet, so cumulative two hundred and fifty square feet. So above, above that allowable square footage. The proposed sign would also be a digital sign and display images. So in addition to that, they would require a CUP, which the Planning Commission at their meeting did not consider further because they did deny the variance. It didn't make sense to move forward with the CUP based on those plans. The reason for denying the variance is that the application didn't demonstrate practical difficulties as outlined in state statute. I did also discuss this with Attorney Teach In, and we discussed a need to update some language in city code so that it is better aligned with state statute. But by either measure, it's still didn't, didn't meet the burden of, of what they would need to show in hardship or in, what's the word again?
Practical difficulties.
Practical difficulties. So there, there was a public hearing held at that meeting, and even though they recommended denial, this does still have to be considered by the city council. And so tonight we have a resolution to deny a variance at Furniture Manor for your consideration. And we can take any questions you have.
Council questions?
So this one, on its face, looks like it's just kind of real easy. Okay, we got a rule, somebody came and wants to get a variance to the rule. A committee got together, spoke about it, decided no, brings it to council. And it would seem like the obvious thing is just say, okay, no, you don't get it. They said, no, we agree. But I downloaded or requested, and thank you, Steph, I requested for documentation because I wanted to learn, like, where did that number come from? Why this height and not another height, et cetera, et cetera? And I mean, it's there, but it's kind of, it's kind of difficult to digest. I then downloaded the statute, looked at the statute, could see directly how the statute comes into play and like, you know. Yeah, exactly. They didn't show the requisite standard being met. But I just, there's, there's also a part of this that's kind of sticking with me, which is why I'm leaning towards, I'm, I'm, I myself am not ready to go yes or no on this. I really need more information around this, I think, to make a really wise decision as to the yes or no of it, because I think there's other practicalities that are involved with this. One of them is, so what does the future look like? So we can say no to this one, but then what kind of precedent does that set? If we wanted to decide and go back to update the ordinance, you know, as the, as there's growth in the community, as there's growth in business, you know, are we going to be at this ordinance size forever and a day? Or do we decide, hey, in order to bring in perhaps new business and new business types, which may require larger signs, now what do we do, right? So just to kind of forecast where I'm with this, I really, I don't have a yes or no, and I'm not trying to be difficult. I just really want to dive into this a little further than just voting tonight and it's just a done deal.
Mr. Mayor. Would it be, I mean, and again, maybe this isn't have, have, because they make reference and even in their application to some area businesses that have signs that are higher than that. Would it be, would it behoove us or be beneficial to have maybe a list of the variances that have been granted in the past on this sign issue?
Mr. Mayor. So some of the signs that are currently there and are very high, like the, the existing sign for this building is above that, that fifteen foot maximum. And those signs were all constructed prior to.
The ordinance.
Yes.
Their lawful, not conforming uses, right?
Yep, so the, I think, my understanding is that the, the root of this sign ordinance came from, came from the twenty forty comp plan, which was a part of, you know, kind of the vision of what does Osseo look like? What does it look like when you drive down eighty-one? Where do you want your eye to be drawn? There are, you know, safety considerations, the amount of illumination you can have. Things like this kind of add into the factors of, you know, again, I wasn't there, so I can't say for sure what, what exactly was all of the reasoning. I've read back over the, the meeting minutes and the, the best I can gather is that this is just kind of the, the vision for what it, what it should look like going forward. And if, you know, any of those existing tall signs were to fall into disrepair and, and need to come down, they would have to meet the same standards in order to rebuild or, or build within that variance. And just to, I'm trying to think of how to, so this, this has definitely been a long drawn out process. Just for reference, this application process started a year ago. Because you're right, it's not, it's, it's maybe looks simple on the surface, but as you get in a little bit deeper, it's, it's not, it's not exactly cut and dry. And, you know, there, there are a lot of arguments for, you know, just, just wanting someone to be able to, to build what they want to build. And what it comes down to is it just, and, and I've spoken to Mary about this at length. If we, if we want to approve a variance here, we would probably need to look at making some bigger changes because this kind of process, it, it doesn't, it doesn't suit us to go through it every time. Every time something would want to be built, so I'll, I'll defer.
Yeah, Mayor, no, I think, Alicia, you did a good job of explaining that. If I could just elaborate a bit, there's a couple considerations here. Number one, there's time requirements for acting on this application. Okay, under the sixty day rule, Minnesota Statute fifteen ninety-nine, the council has to make a decision within sixty days on a complete application, which was received in April, I think, right?
That's right, just before the cutoff for posting for the public hearing at the nineteenth meeting, so.
So that could be extended once, but there is, there is a timing consideration here. The, the second part of this, and if I could maybe sort of get to what I think Councilmember Torres might be getting at, is that number one, you have to act on the application in front of you. If you want to make changes to the zoning requirements in the sign code, that's a different thing. So if this council has different views about what the height requirements should or shouldn't be, you can amend the sign ordinance, but right now you're, what's in front of you is an application for a variance for what's currently in the sign ordinance. And so as was discussed at the Planning Commission, the application for this particular variance, unless I missed it, the application, and I think which was confirmed by the Planning Commission, was really based on a need for a bigger sign for better business. And the standard for granting a variance is you have to take into account in the council memo, I'm not going to read it to you, but there's the practical difficulties test. And you have to show that it's, you know, consistent with the comprehensive plan. It has to meet the practical difficulties test, which is that they want to use the property in a reasonable manner. There are circumstances unique to the property that require a variance. So, you know, usually variances are granted for something like a setback because the shape of the lot is such that somebody can't meet the setback to build something they want to build. Those kinds of things. So in this particular application, if you were to consider granting it or disagreeing with the Planning Commission, you should articulate how you think the application meets this legal standard.
And that was, sorry.
So that would be very important to do, and we also have to consider the timing issue here. If you want to go beyond the sixty days and we have to extend it for another period of time. And I don't know what more information there is to gather, just to.
Yeah, I mean, and thank you. I totally understand that. That was the thing I was struggling with is they don't meet that standard. And because of that, you know, it's almost like our hands are tied.
And if you, and if the council does not take action to, and I'm not telling you what your decision is going to be, but if you don't take action on the application, then it's automatically approved at some point if you fail to meet the statutory deadlines.
So if, if it's denied and say the applicant is just super strongly, no, we really want this, is, what happens then? Like, is there, can they challenge our decision and then now we have to go down that road? Is there a standard appeals process where it goes before an ALJ? I mean, I'm just trying to understand what happens next after we decide whether or not to, to grant the variance or deny it.
The next step would be they could initiate judicial review of the council's decision. So again, just to be clear, you can act on this application, but if the council as a whole wanted to see changes to the sign ordinance, you could still do that, but still within the purview of the city council. But it's important to act, to take some action on the application.
So I mean, given that, I mean, it's the legal standard thing that's really the, that's the thing that's going to cause this to be a no, no variance. But that being said, you know, I kind of, I do want to look at pursuing, looking at this ordinance. Because, you know, like I said, well, after reading this from two thousand and eighteen, sure, that's what the world looked like in two thousand and eighteen, seven years ago. So we're not talking just a couple of years ago. There are substantial changes to Osseo in the last seven years. And we are talking about a very specific area, which is Highway eighty-one. So I don't want to give the impression that it's, okay, let's change the sign ordinance and it does turn into Little Vegas or something, right? I'm not proposing that at all. I don't want to change the complexion of the community at all. But if it's going to change, I'm okay with changing the end of the town on eighty-one. So, yeah, I mean, it's, and thank you for the legal reminder about that. That's, we don't need to get challenged on the other side of the coin for that. And if it's denied, just so the applicant, you know, knows that it's just not falling into a vacuum, that it's understandable what they were asking for, it's just legally, we can't go down that route right now. But I can say that we can go forward with looking at, or I would propose that we look at the statute as a whole at some point in the future, so. How's that? Yes, I will. I will make a motion to approve the resolution denying the application for variance due to lack of legal practical difficulties and not meeting the legal standard required.
Can I get a motion by Councilmember Torres to approve the resolution denying the application for the variance due to legal practical difficulty?
Difficulties and not meeting the standard.
Meeting the standard, is there a second?
Second.
Saying my Councilmember Cook. Any further discussion? Seen none. Attorney Teach In?
Thank you, Mayor. This is resolution number thirty-two. Councilmember Cook.
Aye.
Councilmember Torres.
Aye.
Mayor Poppy.
Aye, motion passes three to zero. All right. Ten K, approve Councilmember Holstrom's resignation and declare a vacancy.
Mr. Mayor and council, the city has received a resignation letter from Councilmember Juliana Holstrom. The city council should adopt a attached resolution which accept Councilmember Holstrom resignation from office as of May twenty-seven, twenty twenty-five and declaring that a vacancy exists on the Osseo City Council to be filled by appointment. Minnesota Statute four, one, two point zero two subdivision two A states that when a vacancy is an elected office of a city with less than two years remaining on the unexpired term of the office, the city council must appoint someone to complete the balance of the unexpired term. The council has leeway in terms of how to appoint an individual to the council. Typically, in the past, we've solicited letters of interest from community members who are interested in serving on the council. Should the council want to continue the same practice, we recommend that the letters of interest be accepted until June seventeenth at noon. That'll give us a few weeks to get people to apply and give them time to review. And then we're asking the council to adopt the attached resolution accepting Councilmember Holstrom's resignation from office and declaring that a vacancy exists.
Council questions?
Mr. Mayor. You know, and I'll talk about this more later, but first and foremost, obviously, I want to thank Councilman Holstrom for her service and the time that she gave the city. It's unfortunate that we, that we have to, to, to do this tonight because I think her voice is important. That being said, I do want to just comment real quick on having been through this process a few times, where you write your letter of interest and you, you apply or, you know, you, and just to encourage those that do that to come to a meeting and come to the Matters of the Floor and talk about why they want to be a council member. You don't really get an opportunity. I mean, you can write a letter and be as descriptive and detailed in your letter as possible because that's what we're having to make these decisions on. There's no formal interview process and things like that. And so, and I think that was something that, that was lost on me a little bit when I, when I applied, the, the, the times that I did and that I went through this. You know, and so just for those of you that are thinking, those of you out there that are thinking about doing this, you know, A, in your letter, you know, not simply just a, hey, I would be, I'd be interested in the open council position, period. You know, talk about the why, talk about, you know, what, what you have to offer, what, what you, what you bring to the, to the table and how you're going to contribute. And like I said, if you need to come to the Matters of the Floor and talk about, hey, I've, I've, you know, applied for the open city council position, I'd like to be considered and here's why. I just think those things would be, would go a long way in helping us make the best decisions that we can to, to fill this vacancy. That's all I have.
I would actually ditto that and then also add, I also went through that process. And I was on the other side of coin. I was one that was not selected, but understandably so. So I can speak to the side of the coin that is you apply and you don't get it. And there were very valid reasons. I completely understood why. And then, you know, it was a matter of having another opportunity shortly thereafter to be able to run publicly, which I'm always going to be more in favor of the public deciding than a body of a few individuals. But there are practicalities to it. So I understand why in this case, you know, we may not have a special election. But I would say that, or I'd like to reiterate, going to Matters of the Floor, it's not a requirement, but thinking about it for a second. So if you are actually interested in being part of the leadership of the city, coming to Matters of the Floor not only shows that you really want to do it and that it's going to be meaningful, it's also you're doing exactly what you're going to do when you're sitting up here is public speaking, is being able to state your purpose, is being able to articulate a position. So I would find that as a decision maker to be a very, very strong thing that is needed for me to help make the decision, at least as far as I'm concerned, as to, you know, how bad does the person really want to do it? How, how engaged are they going to be? And a big reason, why, why do you want to do this? I mean, that's something that you have the luxury of presenting to the. I mean, that's something that you have the luxury of presenting to the public when you're running a campaign. You explain to people, this is why I think I'm the person for the job, and this is why I want to do it. It's not just having the skill set, it's the passion, it's, you know, just the whole package. One thing I would like us to consider is having the cutoff past the 17th, and I would like to push that two weeks if I was, you know, going to make a motion on this, to the first. Because that, moving from the 17th to the first allows not only another council meeting that we're going to have, but it allows us more time to digest who is going to do this. And more importantly, to the point we're just making about Matters from the Floor, it's going to give people more of an opportunity to come and present themselves at a Matters of the Floor. So, perhaps they can't make, for whatever reason, the first meeting that's going to happen, you know, that happens before the 17th, which is going to be on the 9th. Well, if for whatever reason they're out of town on the 9th, but they may be a very passionate person in the community that really has a lot to offer and they, you know, want to come in and do it, but they just literally can't make it on the 9th, moving into the first gives them the opportunity to do it on the 23rd. So, I really like the idea of really having a thoughtful decision about who is going to come up here and provide the broadest opportunity. Because then, again, I am a strong believer in representative government. And while I understand, again, the practicalities of why we don't do a special election and all the complexities that come with that, along with the costs and everything else, it's, and obviously, we can't wait until the next election cycle. There's too much important business where we need five fully engaged people. And I don't want that to be misrepresented, misread as saying that Councilmember Holstrom was not engaged. She was fully engaged, and I respect everything that she did when she was up here. And I also respect her decision doing what she's doing now. But I will say candidly, I would, for good or bad, depending on your perspective, I'm sitting up here because of Councilmember Holstrom. And it was her passion that I saw almost as a mentorship. And I know she, she doesn't like me saying that, but it's more because it's embarrassing. But I, I will say she was and is a mentor to me. I think it's very important that you have differing opinions. I mean, that's what it's all about. You have to have differing opinions to have viable conversations about important issues, important decisions. So, she is going to be greatly, greatly missed. And I think if we're going to fill those shoes, we need to do everything possible to allow for candidates or people that are interested in this position to come forward. So, any decision we make is going to be based on the timing of that. I'm, I'm strongly saying we need to go to the first and not the 17th.
Mr. Mayor? And I'm only, I'm going to disagree with you just for one, for one, for one reason, in the sense of moving it to the first, in the sense of, you know, again, having been through this process on three different occasions, you know, you would still have June 9th. You would really still have the 23rd if you needed to because the decision wouldn't be made until later in the evening on the 23rd. You would have the 23rd to be able to state your case as to why you thought that maybe they should select you. So, I think it gives two different meetings, but most importantly, I think we need somebody in that seat. And I, and I think we're going to have some people that are going to be interested. And I think that we're going to have the time to be able to process that. But I think we need to, we need a full council. And I just, I feel like we need a full council sooner than later, in, in my opinion. So, I, I think it's realistic to start taking applications through the 17th, push the appointment to the 23rd, or do the, handle the appointment on the 23rd, and get somebody so we can start July 1st with a full council ripper and ready to go, in my, in my opinion. But other than that, I, I, it doesn't really say anything in here about, as far as for the adopting the resolution, it just simply says accepting the resignation. The logistics, I think, can be figured out by staff. We certainly can share our opinions with them on that. But at this point, I'd like to adopt, or I'd like to make a motion to adopt the attached resolution accepting Councilmember Holstrom's resignation from office as of May 27, 2025, and declare that a vacancy exists on the Oseo City Council to be filled by appointment.
I got a motion by Councilmember Cook to adopt the resolution accepting the resignation. Is there a second?
Second.
By Councilmember Torres, any further discussion? None, Attorney Teaching, please.
Thank you, Mayor. This is Resolution Number 33, Councilmember Cook.
Aye.
Councilmember Torres.
Aye.
Mayor Poppy.
Aye, motion passes three to zero. Please submit those letters of interest. All right, 10I, Counciltable, questions on that? Now we look for a motion.
So, moved.
Can I get a motion by Councilmember Cook to approve tonight's Counciltable? Is there a second?
Second.
Same by Councilmember Torres, any further discussion? See none, all those in favor?
Aye.
All those opposed, motion passes three to zero. Administrator report.
Mayor, Council, we accepted quite a few resignations and a retirement tonight, so I just want to bring those out. Chief Two, Blaine Anderson, was with the fire department for quite some time, went through the ranks and became chief two. And I hope his future is bright and that he moves on to where he wants to be. I think one that hopefully we'll have some more information soon because I want to be there is accepting the retirement notice from Fire Inspector Hugh Height. Hugh did me a huge favor. I came to him when I took over last year. He was going to retire, and I asked him to stay as long as he could, and he just kept going and going and going. And so, I, I have a lot of respect for Hugh. He's run our inspection services through the fires department for quite some time. Yep, since 2014, so 11 years. And he did stay on and, and help us get us to our, our full-time fire chief has taken over the inspection services. So, I want to recognize Hugh for that and, and thank him publicly. Also thank him privately, but he does want to retire. And I also, we accepted the resignation of Administrative Assistant Mary Lou Byer. Again, I just want to congratulate her moving on to another city job. And I, I just want to say thank you to her for the, the last year of her service that I've had direct contact with her because she's been a valuable member of our team. And I think it's been, it, it's going to hurt to lose her, her experience. And, and so, it's a good thing that, it's a hard one, right? We lose people, people come and go, but this, this one was, was difficult. And I'd also like to recognize the service of Councilmember Holstrom and just say again, she played a vital role in, in a lot of decision-making and had great opinions and showed herself as a, as a good council member for, for all of us. So, just want to recognize her service. Thank you.
All right, Assistant and City Administrator. Council and Attorneys, report, Attorney Teaching.
Thank you, Mayor. I also just want to wish Councilmember Holstrom well. Sorry to see the news on that, but understand and, and hope that she's doing all right and wish her well in the future. Enjoyed working with her very much. And we also touched on this a little bit earlier, but probably sometime in the next few months, the council will be, will be seeing some proposed changes to the zoning code relating to variances and conditional use permits. That process will begin with the planning commission. And we want to bring those codes in line with state statute and also just talk about some differing procedures that are in place right now. So, you'll probably be seeing that within, within the next few months.
Thank you. Councilmember Torres.
All right, away we go. First of all, want to reiterate the thanks to all of those that had submitted their resignations. Really appreciate any public service and do want to congratulate them for that. Also want to wish them all the best in the future. Mary Lou was actually one of the first people that I met when I started actually coming into this building. So, yep, that will, that will be a smile that I will miss. I already kind of spoke to the resignation of Councilmember Holstrom and just want to reiterate, I, I can't say thank you enough for just everything that she has done, the inspiration that she has provided. She was a leader, she was passionate about this city. I believe still is passionate and will continue to be passionate about this city. She cares about this city. And it's, it's one, you know, it's something, when you can disagree with somebody and it can be civil, I just, that's going to be, that's going to be something I'm going to miss because her and I did not see eye to eye on a lot of things. But the one thing I will say that we had for each other was mutual respect. And I know that I have a ton of respect for her. And at the same time, you know, you have to respect somebody's decision for whatever it is. So, just to say again, looking at the camera, Councilmember Holstrom, you will be missed. Next, I'd like to make some real quick comments. Turning about Matters from the Floor. I want to appreciate Joe's comments. I wanted to let him know that there is no offense taken and there's no apology necessary. Hard comments are what comes with doing what we do up here. Hard opinions are what comes with what we do up here, and that's fine. I welcome that. I appreciated Joe's comments. I don't even necessarily disagree with all those comments. And, you know, similar to what I said in some emails received over the last couple of weeks, I welcome those. Please criticize, tell me your thoughts. I don't know it all, I'm not going to pretend that I know it all. Well, I might pretend that I know it all, but I don't know it all. So, you know, about the conversation that took place, absolutely it took place. I'm going to be the first to admit, I don't remember the exactness of that conversation. If I said something to the effect of, oh, the number's going to change. I'm not going to say I didn't say that. But I think there's much more context than one sentence in a conversation that you have with a neighbor as a city council member. I am sure, given what I am now, having been admitted to the bar, I am Mr. Declan, disclaimer, all over the place, whether disclaimer is even valid or not. But I'm, I am sure that I disclaimed, hey, I'm not speaking in exactness, but if I didn't, shame on me. So, if there was an impression that I gave that was incorrect, I apologize about that. But I will say that there was a lot of context that was not a two-minute conversation. We actually sat and talked about not only that, but a number of other things. I, it was at that little conversation that I happened to learn that Joe does kitchen remodeling. So, it, the conversation was much more than, hey, I got this notice, this is how much, oh, you're not going to have to pay that. So, I just wanted to keep that clear. It's also important to note that the quote-unquote leftover funds, we went over and over and over that. So, it was not like that was not discussed. What may have looked like to some people as my unknowing something? You're absolutely right. I am learning on the job. I am learning how bonding works. When I, I actually went to a class that teaches city council members to be better city council members right from the get-go, back in January. They spent about an hour on bonding. Bonding is something that takes years to understand, let alone be able to do. So, I rely on others for the information I get about that. I will continue to learn about how the bonding process works. But what I was able to decipher at the last meeting was that we, in fact, were using all of the money that we didn't spend in the earlier projects. So, there are those who may still believe that somehow that is gone or was never used. Again, it's not a big bucket of money. It was money that we had available to use to help offset the grand total of what was left in the project. And I want to reiterate, that money was used. There's, I'm getting notes saying, oh, we're going to investigate, where'd that money go? Didn't go anywhere. It went towards the project, we didn't have to get new funding. So, I just want to make that really, really clear. I want to explain why, at least in my mind, holding off for another couple of weeks longer would not have served any purpose because that's been brought up a few times. Why, why did, you know, we had a no vote, okay? I respected the no vote. Why did I particularly make the motion? Because I felt that after spending over 40 minutes, and yes, I'm a clock watcher, after spending approximately, because I'm sure somebody's now going to go and look at the timer, what felt like 40 minutes, it was time to move on. If we've got something hard to do, eventually you have to do it. And that's, that may be my military background, for good or bad. But sometimes in a leadership position, you have to make very difficult decisions that not everybody's going to like. In the military, it's even worse. You got to make decisions where people aren't coming back. And you talk about, and I was never in that, I want to make that very clear. I never had to make decisions like that. I can't fathom how people that are in those types of leadership positions do that because I respect the heck out of that. My decisions here, yes, they impact lives, not to the extent where somebody's not coming home. But I think the analogy is still there. These are difficult decisions, somebody is not going to be happy. I'm not up here for a popularity contest. I did not run a campaign for a popularity contest. I ran a campaign because I felt like I had some skills that would be helpful to the city. I have some ideas that could be helpful to the city, and I'm willing to listen and hear all sides. Now, when that particular vote came down, somebody was not going to be happy. We had a motion to change the, basically the ordinance, the law, from the 80/20. Okay, but to that extent, okay, so we changed that. So, now, instead of these folks being upset, you give them some relief, but you give them relief at the cost of somebody else. And I think the number was like 700 and something odd. Other households, well, now theirs goes up. The bottom line is, to me, again, and only me, in my opinion, and sharing my decision-making process for this one particular thing, was that we have an ordinance. Ordinance says 80/20, okay, check that box. This is the last of a five-part project. And to the arguments that were made, that if we change this now, that's not fair to people in the past who had to live by the ordinance, check that box. Now, let's put a disclaimer on that. Was I the recipient of somebody who, that ordinance was changed? Absolutely. But to be clear, I did not advocate for that. I advocated for one thing when I kept coming here as not on city council that year. It was to make clear that there were other options in how we did the road, not how we charged for it. After that decision was made to change it from a full rip and replace to a reclamation, I felt like I had done what was done. The council then made a decision, and I still am trying to figure out or learn how that happened, but that normal 80/20 was changed. I want to be real clear, I had nothing to do with that. I did not back anything with that. But did I accept it? Absolutely. And I think I would challenge anybody that is a recipient of something that falls in their favor to say, nope, I don't want it, right? During the conversation that was had before I made the motion to move forward with the alley project assessment, there were claims that I, you know, was a crappy council member and I didn't ask enough questions and I didn't care and I was dismissive. And I apologize if anything came across like that. But nothing could be further from the truth. I literally asked at one point, let's take it backwards. If we start with $5,000, how do we get there? And I was told, you can't do that. There was no way of getting to there without changing the ordinance or doing something that was going to shake somebody else up. So, I stand behind my motion. I am willing to take whatever flak, that, again, comes with this position. I've got no problem with that. This is not going to be the last time I make a hard decision that somebody's not going to like. And I respectfully say, okay, great, hit me with what you don't like about it, and that's great. That's going to help me learn in making future decisions. But at the end of the day, that is why I did what I did. And people are going to be still not liking, liking that. But I, I thought in fairness, I should let people know why I did what I did now that I can say that. Because, and I'm coming to a conclusion here quickly. So, there was also another comment made that if we waited, we could have talked offline. And, and that is a fair statement that was made by Joe. The problem is, and The problem is, and something I never understood until I had the 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 opportunity to sit in the seat and the privilege to sit in the seat and going to that learning that we did for city council members, there are actually laws regarding it, and they're very good laws. And those laws preclude any more than two council members getting together outside of these chambers to discuss any one topic. And while that initially to me sounded very counterproductive, it's like, this is inefficient, this is a ridiculous law, until you start peeling the onion, you find out, why do we have that law? We have that law because of government and sunshine. We have that law because we do want transparency. We don't want secret deals, we don't want little handshakes. So we have a rule called the open meeting law, which is a state statute that says no more than two council members can get together and talk about any one thing, we have to work through city staff, through city administration to do that. And we had already gone past that point. And I I was not going to sit and have fifty-one some odd households sit and wonder for yet another two weeks, what's going to happen to us? It was not good news to give somebody, I get that. And to that point, and you will hear this more than once while I sit up here, you will hear comments in here like, ah, or, oh, man, or wow, or I think, what was the, it was the oh, well. That oh, well, was not dismissive of the people who passionately came up here to make their case. That oh, well, was my frustration that we could not find a solution to reduce a pretty exorbitant cost on an assessment. But at the end of the day, the cost is what it was, the statute is what it was, and now moving forward, we can revisit. Is eighty-twenty the right number? Things have changed, the economy has changed since that. So we can move forward and we can see, maybe there is some equitable way to change those numbers. But the time was not on the fifth of five legs of a project to start changing things. And then the people that were in those four earlier projects, okay, what about them? So with that, I will conclude with, I really do appreciate your comments, Joe, I was really, I understand why these run late and, you know, people have lives. I wish that I could say to you face-to-face, and when I see you on the street, I will say to you face-to-face, thank you. I appreciate your comments. I appreciate if you don't like the job I'm doing, and I'm welcome to hear your opinions on what I can do better in this role. I do not take offense to it whatsoever, and I welcome those opinions, even though those opinions aren't necessarily making me Mr. Popular Guy. So thank you, I know I went extremely long on that, but I just wanted to get that out. So thank you.
That concludes my report.
Mr. Mayor, can I, this is what I asked you earlier, I'd like to yield some of my time to these wonderful people that have showed up in the back to talk about the pet store ordinance that we that we passed. And I know they came last meeting and didn't get a chance to talk, and they wanted to come this meeting, and they sat here and they've listened to all kinds of stuff. So I would like to yield at least part of my time, with the ability to reclaim it, to the to the pet store ordinance, people that have come to support, assuming that they want to talk.
Is that a little cake in there? Come on up.
And my apologies, being, yes, thank you for coming.
Thank you. My name is Aaron Zohoff, and I actually was partnering with one of the local constituents who spoke two weeks ago, Jeff, who got up here and spoke. I didn't, I didn't plan on coming up here and saying anything tonight, so I'm I'm humbled by that, but I just wanted to say thank you so much for the work on this, thanks for the leadership, the mayor, the council on this. This is an important issue for all the reasons that you've heard about, and so I wanted to just say thank you. So, thank you, that's all I have to say.
Thank you for coming, guys, we really appreciate it. But now I take back my.
Torres used it all up, we're done.
Team effort, by the way, on that.
Bring up the gavel, though.
And that was a team effort, though, I just want to make that real clear, it was everybody, we worked on it. I give it up.
Just really, I'll make mine very quickly. Reiterate the thank yous to Chief Two Blaine Anderson, one of the single nicest human beings you'll ever meet, I mean, just a good guy, always willing to help out. Fire inspector Height and administrative assistant Mary Lou, you know, just always, always enjoyed our interaction. So I I again, and it's been said, it's been said many, many times, but just the 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 utmost respect and thanks for council member Holstrom and the time that she did work for this city and and cared about her constituents immensely, and was very passionate about what she believed in. And and so I'm just grateful, you know, for her service and just wanted to say thank you for that. And then very lastly, just, you know, again, just reiterating, you know, those of you that are interested in filling that position, you know, get your letters in, and again, do your due diligence on those letters, really, really be complete and thorough on why this is something that you want to, that you want to do. I I know I can offer up, if you're, if you want to, you know, come talk to me about what it's like to be on city council and what the requirements are and what the time commitment is or anything like that, you have any questions whatsoever, I would be happy to, you know, try to try to to be helpful, a a resource for anybody interested. But just, you know, make sure that you, you know, if you are interested, apply, because we we need good people to help represent the city. With that, I'm done.
All right. With that, just, yes, I wanted to say thank you, council member Holstrom, for your years of service, it was a pleasure serving with you. With that, moving on for adjournment.
So moved.
Okay, a motion by council member Cook, is there a second?
Second.
Second by council member Torres, non-debatable, all those in favor?
Aye.
All those opposed? Motion passes three to zero. We're adjourned at eight fifty-six, thank you.